They're at my house on Sunday.
Oh, you were.
Yeah.
I came over to make it.
She thinks she's got it.
Couple times.
It's always a good time.
Something good at time.
Oh, yeah, it's not yet.
Yeah, we're good.
Expensive?
Expensive, yeah.
What's bigger mean by barely or? That surprises me, actually. Thought ours was fifty.
We're sneaking in under the clock here.
I'm not waiting. Good morning. Good morning, I'm gonna call our county board meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, Beth, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen, here. Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lipinski.
He's absent excuse today.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right, move on to approval of the agenda. Monty, any changes?
We have no changes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Give a motion of second to approve our agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. And as we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Anybody signed up?
I seen there was somebody back there signed up. Tell him to sign in.
Sir, have you signed in on the open forum?
I did. I don't know if I signed the right one. I did. All right.
Perfect. If we could just have your, if we could just have your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Lipinski.
Thank you.
Twenty-five oh-one Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast, Stock Rapids.
Okay.
I'm here with a bunch of the landowners from County Road twenty-five, Matt Geiselhart, Chad Bowerley, Kiff Myers, Clarence and Judy, Kathy Simmons, Pam Bowerley, Mark Bowerley, Mark Branny, Janelle Ottenman. So we're the majority of the landowners on County Road twenty-five. And County Road twenty-five between highways twenty-three and ninety-five, we're requesting that you add pav- add shoulders to that section of road or do a total reconstruct. According to the upcoming twenty-twenty-five construction schedule, it's to receive a mill and overlay only. This is the only section of Seventy-Fifth Avenue between highways twenty-three and Highway ten that does not have paved shoulders. In addition to not having paved shoulders, it's a very narrow section of road. The by-two minutes measures twenty-two feet. The double center line measures twelve inches. The fog line to the end of the pavement measures anywhere from nine to eleven inches. This leaves some sections of the road with lanes under ten feet. There's considerable commercial traffic on this road, twenty-to-twenty-five to thirty-five a day. And it's not uncommon to see these vehicles going over the center line. As landowners, we are asking that you consider our request to update this section of road. We think it's absolutely necessary, and it is some safety issues on that road.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the open forum?
My name is Matt Geiselhart. I live at two-zero-four-nine Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast. I also am a landowner with Lipinski and the group. I've got a couple of kids. One now is nineteen, which isn't a big deal, but also an eleven-year-old. And for him growing up, there's, there was nowhere for him to bike or anything other than the backyard. So we would actually go to Donovan Lake, just because of the safety issues that, I'm right on top of the hill. It's not so bad for me to see both ways. But coming up in the, up the hills and down the hills, and like Mark said, the high rate of speed that a lot of those vehicles are moving, it makes it a pretty dangerous place to walk and to bike. I understand as far as kids, there's safety issues on top of that to begin with, but there really is nowhere for them to go on the shoulder of the road. Several times I've had vehicles in my ditch. I've had my mailboxes taken out twice, just for the fact that vehicles had to move over from other vehicles. Knife River had actually had a grader that took out our, our mailboxes once because somebody was over the center line right on top of the hill. So I, I stand with everybody and would like to see an improvement on the shoulders and the widening of our road.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Mark Bowerley. I live on four-four-four-eight Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast. Being in the construction industry for many years, this stretch of road appears to me to be one of the least safe ones in the county and probably even in the state because of the grades that when you're coming up the hills and with the farm tractors and equipment behind them, it becomes very hard to, to stop in time, slow down in time when you, because of the line of sight going over the hill. The slopes are less than four to one and probably even three to one or less. This, and the shoulders, you know, are designed for two feet, I believe, but you measure it and there's a lot of places where it's not. So overall, I think it's very unsafe and when you go from one end to the other of that stretch, it goes to very safe roads with twenty-four-foot tops and wide shoulders, and I think that this is appropriate for this stretch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the open forum?
Mark Branny, eighty-one-hundred Dewell Road. I think it needs to be done too, just because it's way too narrow. It's, should've been done a long time ago that it would be benefit to everybody to get it widened up.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Anyone else? I see there's a couple more names on the list here if you'd like to speak.
My name is Kathy Simmons. I live at seventy-four fifteen Thirtieth Street Northeast, Stock Rapids. My land butts up to Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast. And I have quit walking and biking on that road because it is too narrow and I have to almost end up in the ditch if a car is approaching me. So I feel that it is time to widen that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Bowerley, sixty-nine eighty Highway twenty-three Northeast, and I also have property at nineteen ninety-five Seventy-Fifth Avenue. Raised our family, still have young kids on Seventy-Fifth Avenue. Same, same as everybody here, that's just, it's been narrow, high traffic and dangerous compared to the other ends of this, of this stretch. So twenty-three to ninety-five is, is, as you, if you go see, it's different than everything on both sides of it. I'm now on the north end of it, same, same concern. I still have family to raise and, and then basically the, like they were mentioning, the hills, you just, everybody gets over the center lines with wide, wide vehicles. It's definitely a concern.
Thank you, Chad.
Hi, I'm Pam Bowerley, twenty-sixty Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast, Stock Rapids. I'm a walker and with all the truck traffic going up and down that road between twenty-three and ninety-five, it's near impossible to walk safely. I'm jumping in the ditch all the time and it just is, I know when they overlaid it, I talked to the engineer at the time and, and he said it was going to be redone, but I mean, that was years ago and at that time, he said he wasn't accounting for any truck traffic. Well, there's a lot of truck traffic on that road, so again, just like everyone else, it's a big safety issue, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Janelle Ottenman, twenty-five hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue Northeast. And again, echoing what most of the others have said, is trying to walk on the road, it is very dangerous and you are in the ditch almost more than you're on the road walking and definitely a huge increase in the, the truck traffic that is on the road now. And, you know, again, farm equipment is larger now than it used to be and, and when that comes by, it's, it's very difficult if there is an oncoming vehicle for those two to meet on the road, for somebody to not be way over in the ditch.
Thank you. Anyone else for the open forum? Gerald is. Gerald, I have Gerald Rook's name on here yet. I don't know if he wanted to speak or. Gerald, did you want to speak at all? I see your name's on the open forum list.
Hello, I'm Gerald Rook from Stock Rapids, Garden Brook, ten-seventeen Garden Brook Drive, if that makes a difference, but anyhow, I was here to get my driver's license renewed and I'm wondering who, who is the boss in that office? And anyhow, that gal says, "Get your head in here." So I put my head in there and she says, "Read them numbers or letters." So I did and she says, "You failed. Get back over by the wall." She wanted to take my picture, so she did. And then, anyway, then she said, "Well, you can write me out a check for eighteen bucks." So I did. And then she said, "Sign this." Well, I was reading it before I signed it. She said, "Just sign it," she says, "It's, the only thing is, it just shows that you paid." Well, then after a while, she tells me it's a bunch of other bullshit too. But anyway, so the gal's name was Cheryl and so I, my eye doctor said before that already, he said, "You don't have to wear glasses for driving, but I do for reading." I had ca- cataract surgery, so they put them lens in. You probably don't want it spout, anyway. So then anyway, he says, I went back there, he said, "You failed that?" I said, "No." He said, "Your eyes are good." So anyhow, then I had to pay him again, copay. And then, then I come back here and she told me to get my head in there again and then I, she didn't test. She's supposed to test my eyes with glasses and without glasses. She only tested them once with glasses. So anyhow, now they said, "He will do it over again, but I gotta pay over again, you know, pay another eighteen dollars." So I said, "No, I will not because that was your mistake." Cheryl's, but she backs Cheryl up all the way to Stock Rapids, St. Cloud. So anyhow, now we're... Oh, then I says, "I wanna be here when you have a talk with Cheryl." Anyhow, she says, "Yeah, you can." Then later, she, she says, "Well, I guess you can't be here when she talks to her." Well, she can tell what's her name, Christine, that one thing, you know, and I don't agree with it, but she's gonna take her word for it, so they're not gonna pay to have my test done again. And, and I want my picture taken without glasses, so. Anyway, that's where we're at right now. I'd like to know who's the boss of Christine Sherbing because she should be getting after that gal when I was there, you know, but she just said she would take care of it, but, but then she told me too, "You gotta pay again, you know, to have your, you know, to, to re- test and, and take my picture." But I says, "No, that was your fault or Cheryl's fault." But she says, "Yeah, I had a talk with her." "Well, what did you come up with?" She didn't give me an answer, so anyway, that's why I'm here. I wanna know who Christine Sherbing's boss is. Are you guys her boss or?
Gerald, I, I'm, I don't wanna get into a big discussion with this about, with you, but the voters are her boss. She does not report to the county board. She's an elected official.
She can call the shots, right?
She's, as the elected official, she runs that office, yes.
But she, just Cheryl that tested my eyes. Anyway, she's, she didn't test them without glasses. She only done half of her job. So, but now they want, if they want me to have it done again, I gotta pay eighteen dollars again. But anyway, I don't know what I should do.
I guess my only suggestion would be Gerald is maybe have another discussion with Christine.
Yeah.
Because it is her office and there's really nothing that we can do from that viewpoint. As an elected official, she runs her office, just like the sheriff or the county attorney would.
But apparently she don't know much about running that office.
All right, anything else, Gerald?
No, I guess that's it.
Okay, good luck with that, thank you.
Thanks, Gerald.
All right, anyone else for the open forum? All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Consent agenda, items one through seven, your wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda items one through seven. Any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Monty. Present to play recognition of property management employees Nate Remus, Ricky Becker, Jake Wegman, Corey Tomford and Ryan Mastie.
Sheriff, Mrs. Sheriff, recorder, we ask our department's employees if they'd like to submit nominations for recognition. So this is for the period of January, February and March. And I see Jeff is with us online. Jeff nominated the folks in property management. Jeff, did you want to make this presentation if you could? And your mic is muted right now. I'm wondering if he's actually sprinting across the parking lot right now.
There he took it off. He unmuted it. There he is.
I, I didn't see him come across the parking lot.
I guess, I just, I nominated him on behalf of the county as far as the outstanding job they did with snow removal. This, this winter was very, very snowy and a lot of ice with thawing and free freezing and stuff. And they spent a lot of extra time coming in early, staying late to make sure that during business hours that, that the sidewalks and parking lots were as well-kept as they can be. Mother nature's a struggle fighting with all winter, but they did an excellent job and I just really appreciate the extra effort they put forth as far as making sure that it's as safe as an environment as we can have in the state of Minnesota for, for our employees and our customers alike that be part of people coming in on the street.
All right, thank you, Jeff. That's a great nomination. Any other comments, Monty?
I, I just echo what Jeff said. Yeah, those folks are coming in very early and also too, while, while we enjoy the comfort of our offices, they're out there in, in the daytime, you know, keeping the sidewalks clear for customers as they're coming in during the day. So definitely appreciate what they've done for us this past winter.
And I'm not seeing any of them here in the audience, but maybe we could just.
They're all very shy.
Maybe we could just give them a little round of applause though.
Absolutely. They don't like the attention.
No, I know. Thank you, and I believe there's certificates that could be handed out.
Yes, we have those absolutely, yeah. We'll make sure they get those.
Okay, and then also we have Joanne Young as our first.
Who's speaking on behalf of Joanne? Who was the, who not, who did the nomination? Okay, come on up, come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adam Martins. I am the supervisor for Human Services with the Home and Community Based Services Unit. Molly Bellinger actually nominated Joanne. She's one of our case managers. The reason why Joanne got nominated, well, to give you a brief history is, is Joanne was hired about a year ago as kind of a prove it position as a case aide to assist our case managers in our unit, join the team as a way to help distribute some of the workload so they could focus more on the client-based stuff and then she can help with some of those paperwork-type services that are there. So what we found is that over the last year, the taxpayer dollars have been put to great use with Joanne. Not only just because of the way that she comes to work with her positive attitude, the mentality about how she does her job, but also the willingness to take on extra tasks and responsibilities. So recently, the, the above and beyond that Joanne did is we had a audit for our unit from DHS. And in the middle of that audit, there was some transition. I just recently became the supervisor of the unit officially in February and that was ongoing with the other supervisor and then also with our Deputy Director Sandy and everything like that. But during that time, Joanne was tasked with kind of managing a lot of that audit requirements and then also working with the case managers to make sure that those audit pieces were all put together. She did a great job with that. The, I think the biggest thing is that there's really no question about, "Hey, this is another thing that we want you to take on, Joanne. It's just kind of, up, I'll take that on, I'll do this. What do you got, what do you need me to do?" And then it's very proficient at it and doing a great job. So we just wanted to recognize Joanne for doing an excellent job in our unit. Great job with getting nominated by Molly and so we just appreciate everything she's done and all of the case, the case management team appreciates what she does and how she supports our unit on a daily basis.
Great, well, thank you, Adam, and Molly was, it was that did the original. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that recommendation. Can we give her a round of applause and we've got a certificate too?
You better get up there.
Did you already sign it, Scott?
I did, I signed it this morning.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to considering a proposed donation of land near the Gordon Bridge. Monty.
Okay. All right. So got a call from a, a property owner who owns, and you can see on your map here, that's the parcel that's, the last three digits are one-zero-one, owns the parcel that's there adjacent to County Road fifty-five and Gordon Bridge. And he is interested in donating a portion of his land to the county. He tells me that folks often will fish from this area. They'll park across the road and the parcel that's in blue and then fish around and under the bridge and on the, off the rip rap that's there. The area that I have in red is a very rough approximation of what it could be. I don't wanna portray this as the exact portion. The property owner said that he'd be interested in doing about a hundred feet. So I used beacon to measure out about a hundred feet. So I, I don't wanna portray this as the final lot. It's just an approximation of what it could look like. So I wanted to note that the county owns a parcel just across the road. It was purchased over twenty years ago when the county reconstructed Gordon Bridge. I, I recall there was a house that sat there. The house was demolished. And as you can see, folks use that area as a parking to go fish around the bridge. So that's kinda where it's at. I, I told the property owner I would bring this up with you all today and get some feedback and thoughts.
Bishop Pop?
Well, I guess if he wants to donate it, I, you know, and I, I did have a call from a former commissioner. That was the commissioner at the time when they built Gordon Bridge. And he read, reads our agendas and, and he says, "I think that that was part of the property that the county, you know, the county was looking at purchasing back then because they wanted to make the curve or something different." I don't know, you know, that's twenty-some years ago. So Monty's got a good memory and so does our former county commissioner. But I, you know, I don't know what we have to do legally to get this donated to the county.
Well, I, I've talked to Roxanne about various techniques. You said it would, there would, you would need to do a plat 'cause you're creating a new lot. She said there's a possible couple of ways. She said it could be dedicated as road right-of-way or a quick claim deed to the county. In other words, we would own it like any other piece of county land or it could be dedicated as right-of-way. So there's, it sounds like there's a couple of techniques. It sounds like, again, there would still though be, you would need to have a survey and a plat and of course, the expense that goes along with that.
Monty, if I could, and you maybe didn't see, but Roxanne did join us.
Oh, hi Roxanne.
I'll maybe call her up if, if I could, put you on the spot a little bit, Roxanne.
The, the question was. What would be the conveyance techniques that might be available to us to receive this property?
And maybe what you would suggest.
Well, and, and I haven't really had a chance to talk to Chris too much about this, but one would be to plat, what's his name, Mr. Lind, I think it's Lindgren, Linseth. So we could plat his property and what we would have is this would become a platted lot and then this area may become, depending, it could become just part of the right-of-way with the road or it would become an outlot. It would be an extremely small outlot. So there's that option. It would be a simple plat. The other option, and again, this is something that Chris and I would need to talk about, is a right-of-way plat. I don't know if that's something that you've given any consideration to, but a right-of-way plat would mean that we didn't have to plat. I don't know if that's something that you've given any consideration to, but a right-of-way plat would mean that we didn't have to plat, uh, Lynseth's property, but only the right-of-way, which may be an easier route.
Okay, so then I think instead of getting deep in the weeds, if we can get some consensus that this is something we'd like to do and then we could ask Roxanne and Chris to get together and bring back a formal action that we could do. Would that be okay with us?
I'd be okay with that.
First, I just wanna see were you even interested in this?
Yeah.
And then we could get to the details later.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
It sounds like the right-of-way would be the least expensive route for all involved. And, you know, I, we, as we learned with the whole fully older coach, when it becomes right-of-way, you can't build in it, but obviously this isn't something you'd ever wanna build on, so that's an issue.
Uh, I think it's a great idea. The only concern I have is now we're liable for people that are on that property fishing and everything.
Wow.
Correct, Monty?
Even if it becomes road right-of-way, would, I mean, might be a difference.
You know, I, I guess I should say, anytime the county acquires property, uh, MCT coverage extends to-
Sure, yep.
And, and we're, we're covered just like we are for the, the property we're standing on today, you know.
Well, I, I think if there's some consensus to move forward, then let's have Roxanne and Chris and probably Michelle, uh, talk about what our options are and if they can bring that forward to another meeting.
And probably see if we can find the least costly on our behalf.
I would assume we could use our surveyor Jay Whitstock for this.
That was kinda my hope was with Jay could do the survey work for us and, you know, right.
But we'll let, we'll let you guys figure that out. I think we've got some consensus. If you could bring back some details to us, that'd be great.
So, uh, then may I report back to the property owner that, that we are interested and we're exploring a ways to convey it? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I'll do that.
Thank you. All right, discuss city, township, and county meeting agenda items for the meeting on May twenty-second.
We're to schedule the meeting on May twenty-second, a joint meeting with cities and townships at Saint Georgetown Hall, uh, six-thirty PM. So, um, on the back of this agenda item, you'll see the, the invitation that I mailed to cities, townships back on March thirtieth. I, I was hoping to follow up and, and with the second mailing, that would include an agenda. And just, uh, it's a reminder about the meeting. So, uh, I was wondering if you had any suggested agenda items that may, uh, that I may include, uh, in this, in this agenda?
Um, before I start rattling it off, has Commissioner Kapinski given you any?
I intend to speak to him before we do this mailing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
Comments from anyone? Commissioner Pop?
I, I don't know. I guess, um, I was hoping that this would be probably topic-driven from the cities and the townships a little more than topic-driven from the county.
Have you received any feedback?
Um, one township emailed me and suggested a topic of, it was more unique to townships. Uh, he suggested a discussion amongst townships about, proper internal controls that count, sorry, townships should be using regarding how they manage their money, their, their, their finances and so on. Uh, I think the, the person seemed a little reluctant to bring it up, uh, given it was somewhat unique to townships, but I said, hey, if you wanna talk about it, that seems fine to me.
Okay.
Uh, it's an opportunity to share with townships his thoughts about good internal controls regarding your finances. So, uh, that was one. That's the only one I've gotten so far.
And I guess from my perspective, I mean, we do our spring and fall one, obviously, but I think it's okay to keep, you know, what the highlights are that are currently going on in the county in front of them. I mean, and they can potentially ask questions. I mean, broadband initiative, the fully to Saint Cloud fiber, um, I mean-
I definitely thought about broadband, yeah.
Five-year road plan. I mean, we're gonna hopefully be discussing that coming up shortly. Uh, there's multiple items that we can keep in front of them. Maybe an update on where they're at, how they're doing with their ARPA expenditures. It'd be nice to know how they're, how they're doing there.
And then the conversation we had Thursday with, uh, um, the, the county rep to the Association of Townships about if they could get in on the sales tax, like a small percentage.
Yeah, we were-
Our sales tax money.
Solar maybe?
Solar, uh, solar, yep. The next era update would be okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I, I think this is our first meeting we're gonna have like this. I think we just gotta keep it an open agenda and try to-
I'd agree. I think these are some good highlights, yeah.
You know, it might be, it might be good, for example, if, if we have various topics for perhaps board members to take turns leading discussions. So in other words, it would seem like Commissioner Kapinski would be, would be our lead on broadband. You know, if some other board member wanna take solar, you know, it might be good to kinda pass that around.
Sure.
And have different board members kinda take the lead on various topics for us.
And we will have, uh, we'll have another board meeting before that meeting.
Yes, yes.
Maybe we can do some assignment of those topics at that point when we've got-
So how about I bring back a draft agenda and then have some discussion then about who's gonna take what?
Right, yep.
You know, uh, we didn't have talked about inviting our department heads to this meeting. Would we wanna ask department heads to be there?
I think we- Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Hannon.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Didn't mean to speak over you. We're gonna say the same thing.
Probably.
You know, I think it would be important that they would be there because a lot of these questions are gonna be related to them to answer instead of us, because we're gonna be going back to our department heads. Mr. Chair, sorry.
I was kinda gonna say the same thing.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I will, um, I don't think I've let them know about this meeting yet, so I will.
Okay.
Fortunately, it's a little ways off still, so, um, I'll let them know and invite department heads to be there.
Okay.
I was just thinking, maybe that's a good opportunity, uh, for Kristen to connect if, with township officials as she has, not yet with all of them so far.
She was at our, uh, our, uh, spring meeting, but that was very low attendance. So, they certainly, not all the townships.
Uh, we're gonna certainly try and arrange for, um, some refreshments and snacks, so. Not, we're not gonna have full dinner.
All right.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to draft agenda. We'll talk about who's gonna cover which issues and get that in the mail out to these folks.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Good deal, thank you.
We'll move on to your administrative report.
So, uh, okay, first thing was employee surveys, employee retention strategies. So, as you may recall, the board approved an agreement with this company called Employee Strategies to do employee surveys and employee retention work. It was the consensus of the management team to do this project in September and October. I think the, the, the observation was that, you know, the summer is really busy. Oftentimes people are gone, vacations and so on. We wanted the maximum possible participation amongst departments, employees and so on. So September and October seem to be the best timeframe. So I just want to let you know, we're gonna do it. It's just gonna be early fall. Uh, we'll have a kickoff meeting with employee strategies in August and then the actual, the, the project will begin then in September. So,
Okay.
That's the decision there. Next is the DDA, the David Drown Associate Maintenance Program. So, um, uh, this is where a program whereby, uh, your, your compensation consultant has sort of an ongoing, uh, market study of all of your positions. So rather than doing once every ten years, you'll take a third, a quarter of your classifications and do a market study each year. And then, then you do another third or a quarter the following year. DDA is gonna, you know, again, it's been quite some time since we've talked to DDA about this and we've had changes in our management team and so on. So DDA is gonna be on our, our May management team agenda to re- sort of refresh our memories about what this program is all about. And then at some point, I'd like them to, uh, make the presentation again to the county board and a committee, the whole. And then at some point, make some decisions as the board ready to move forward with this maintenance program. Uh, Tessa, who's the primary consultant with DDA, she sent me a list of about, eh, twenty cities and counties that use the maintenance program. Uh, I'm gonna contact three or four of those. Uh, there are counties that are maybe similar in size to us. Uh, that's probably a better representation. It seems like most of their client base is more to the south. There's, there are many, like more smaller counties to the southern part of the state that are using this. Uh, not too many, you know, central and, and north. Uh, the biggest county I saw that's using it is Olmsted. But there's quite a few smaller, uh, southern counties that are using. And there's a, there's a good number of cities which are using it too. So, but I wanna talk to a few and just understand their experiences and how it's worked and any, any challenges and issues. Uh, but again, the, the first thing is they'll make that presentation to the May management team meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, Ben in the River Forest Management, I gotta show some pictures.
He's just giddy.
I was gonna say, yeah. Let's see here, uh, uh, okay, I put some pictures out there. So, the forestry manager project has been underway now for, for, uh, let's say about three weeks. And, um, let's see here. I'm just gonna quickly flip. So let's see, here's the first one. So Jeff and I went out there, uh, last week with, in visit with Bob Purleyberg, our DNR retired forester. And, uh, he showed us what's been happening. This is actually one of the Scotch pine windbreaks which will be subject to complete removal. Uh, this is actually very near the parking lot. And you can see the large, uh, piece of equipment there that's taking, taking down trees. And again, there's three windbreaks which are completely Scotch pine that will be completely removed. Uh, let's see, I'll just move on. And you're gonna have to, I'll have to apologize, my video that I have, I turned my camera at the worst moment. I, I am not a video, videographer, so. So there he is, he's taken. So turn your head sideways. It just shows you the size of trees this thing can take out. And then I flipped it back over, so sorry about that. Okay, I don't know how to use my camera. I admit it. And I'll, I'll just quickly show you a few more, a few more pictures here of, of just the removal. Let's see, I'll just skip, skip through these pretty quickly. Uh, and I'll get on. So this is actually an area that's been thinned. So this, if you can picture, this is, there's a large triangle area of trees to the south end of the park that's on the east side of Canal Road fifty-five. So this is an example of thinning that's been occurring in that area. The selective thinning. And, you know, the vast majority of the park, the tree stands will be thinned. And as you may notice, they're just leaving the, the brush there. It's where it's gonna stay. It, it eventually of course rot, you know, decay, but it's gonna stay. So, um, you, again, this is an example of thinning versus complete removal. And, uh, as Bob explained to us, that will help improve the health of the remaining trees so they can now grow and, and hope we survive much longer. Just more thinning, more thinning. Of course, they're obviously removing logs and taking them out. I'll show you, this is the piece of equipment that's actually doing the thinning. Uh, so it goes in and grabs, I think I did a little video here of him. Here's one. So he, he goes in and grabs the tree. It takes it down. Uh, and then it, and then it, uh, strips all the branches off. And then I think it cuts it into about ten-foot lengths. Uh, it's an incredible piece of, of machinery. I asked Bob Purleyberg, what's something like this cost? He said about a million bucks. Um, yeah, so this is the one that's gradually kinda picking its way through the, the, the tree stands that remain and, and cutting down selected trees. And then, at some point, then another piece of equipment comes in and grabs the logs and takes them to the parking lot where they're loaded on to a truck. Yeah, so you can see there, it's just chops them right off. Takes them off, yeah. So that's the selective thinning that's going on. Uh, let's see if I got any more here. That might be about it. Just more, more areas that have been thinned. Okay, so I asked Bob how much longer they have to go and he said probably about three weeks or so. There's not a really huge crew that's doing this. At the time over there, there were two individuals. One doing the Scotch pine area, one doing the, the thinning. Uh, so it's not a huge crew. And frankly, that's probably not a bad thing. So there's not like just tons of trucks going back and forth all the time. It's a little more subtle, a little more low-key. So about three more weeks. One thing I gotta add on this, so the next step would be the stump removal. So, uh, Bob actually has connected us with a, an organization based out of the metro that can help provide us with a grant to cover most of the cost of the stump removal. Uh, it's a really interesting concept and, and Jeff is gonna bring more about this to you later. But, uh, it turns out the cost of the stump removal is expensive. Very, we're talking probably in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. But apparently this organization can bring to bear legacy grants to this process to help. What they ask from us, the local match, is what the, the proceeds that we'll get from the, from the tree removal. So, um, well, again, we'll bring more about this to you later, but has the prospect, again, of, of bringing in a substantial grant to remove all the stumps and all the brush and then reseed the areas where the trees were completely removed. So, uh, more, more to come about this one later.
Great.
Uh, most likely, the stump removal would not happen until this fall. As we work out an agreement with this organization and get through the details. So that probably would be this fall.
Just as a refresher, Monty, the, uh, the proceeds was approximately thirty-five thousand?
Thirty and thirty-five thousand, right. Yep, yep.
Yep. Thank you.
One question I had was, somebody wanna know if we're, we're removing the complete windbreaks, if we're gonna replant trees or are we gonna put it to?
You know, I, I, I think that's a conversation we should have with the park commission. Uh, I, I think, um, if, if I would give you a suggestion, it would be just seeded in prairie. And then, at least for now, seed in prairie, get the prairie established. And then go back and think, you know, where, where should trees be planted? If trees should be planted, some things of that nature, you know, what? I think there probably should be sort of a plan about, you know, what kind of trees are put in and where. So, I think that's a good conversation for park commission to have, you know, with, um, Bob, um, with SRF.
Park commissions is having a meeting in May, right?
June, late June, late June, late June. Uh, maybe I just toss in a couple more quick park updates. Is the electrical upgrades at the campsite are all done? Uh, the wifi work is underway. The online reservation system is up and running and being used and Jeff reports good results. Uh, it almost immediately, a, a bunch of folks jumped in and made seasonal reservations through it. So it sounds like the online system is working great. Uh, so I, I really, great acknowledgement for Jeff.
Yeah.
Of all the things that he's doing to help make that a modern, efficient park room, uh, campground.
Well, the time-saving. Somebody was going out to collect money on the weekend.
Right. No more picking up money every day.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Pay with your credit card. If you've been out there, you may notice there's a new sign that says, you know, no money taken on-site, reservations online only. Uh, we wanna make that clear when folks drive in. Yeah, that's right. We don't, I take, okay, let's move on. Uh, just lastly, uh, recruitment practices. You know, I, I think sometimes some concerns about our recruitment practices are filtered through to board members. One of the subjects that, that came up, I think, uh, most recently was this concept of testing, pre-employment testing. Uh, in some instances, we do ask certain applicants to go through a pre-employment testing. Uh, for example, um, with detention officers. There's a specific, uh, pre-employment test for detention officers. Uh, there's a pre-employment test for de- for deputy sheriffs. Uh, we've also done a, a pre-employment testing for, for clerical-type positions. Uh, it's a, it's a somewhat generic test for, for various clerical entry-level type positions throughout the county. And I know there was some concern about whether or not the testing itself was reducing the number of applicants that we were getting. Uh, or the number of people who advanced on the process to, you know, interviews and selections and so on. And, uh, so had a conversation with our management team recently about this subject of testing. And one of the things I wanted to make it abundantly clear and that is, testing is optional. Testing is optional. So it's really up to the department head to decide, do they want to do pre-employment testing? I think perhaps there was a perception that, you know, it's something that they had to do, they were required to do. And I wanna make that abundantly clear. It is not required. I know in our sheriff's office, I think they, from I hear from Johanna, is that they wanna do, they wanna continue testing. It's something they feel is valuable to them. Uh, but in other instances, uh, particularly maybe for some clerical positions, uh, we would not do testing. And I understand, testing sometimes can be a challenge. For example, uh, it could take, you know, we may ask you to come here and spend your, virtually your half of a day doing a, a test. And what we do is we say, okay, okay, testing will happen on this day at this time. And in other words, that, that person has to, you know, make arrangements with their current employer to be here, uh, for that half a day. And I understand that can be burdensome. That can be burdensome for someone to take off half a day on the day we designate to be here for testing. So in this current employment environment, we've gotta re- reduce as many obstacles as we can to get qualified applicants. And some instances, that may mean we do not do testing. You know, I, I, there's some actually good ideas that came out of the, the management team meeting. Uh, some were, for example, how about being more flexible about testing? In other words, have testing after work hours, maybe weekends, maybe online testing rather than being here in person. Those are really excellent ideas and ones I'll explore with Johanna. Cause again, I think, you know, in this employment environment, in this labor environment, I think you all hear this issue too. We've gotta reduce obstacles to, to bring in applicants. We can't put these things in front of them. And then that resulted in a bunch of folks just saying, I can't, I can't be a part of this. We don't have that luxury. So anyway, I just wanna let you know, it, it's not an issue we're ignoring. It's an issue that, that we definitely need to address.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. All right, I'm gonna turn it- All right, I'm gonna turn it over to our humans and, human services board chair, Commissioner Hyden.
Thank you, we'll call it over to the human services board. Approver, amend the agenda, Bob, do you have anything?
No, no changes.
Do you have anything to, no changes?
Who for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda item number one, approver, amend the human services meeting minutes of April eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any clerk? If not, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, Bob, consider the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four contract with Lutheran, Lutheran Service, Social Services for Keeping Families Together program, thank you.
Nikki Knowles is gonna come and speak on that.
Thank you, good morning Nikki.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Nikki.
Uh, so Benton County was granted a, um, some money from the Department of Revenue, and it needed to be focused on local families and homelessness. And so Benton County had previously partnered with Lutheran Social Services on a grant for Keeping Families Together. This was also with Sherburne County. So the past three years, we've been working closely with them, focusing on our child protection families and making sure that they are trying to reduce barriers for homelessness. So, the grant ended with them, and now we receive this additional money that we're hoping to sustain that program. So we again are partnering with Lutheran Social Services and hoping to keep the Keeping Families Together program. Again, focusing on prevention, um, and reducing barriers for homeless families. The, um, purpose of the grant is to keep the kids, um, whole, or sorry, school-aged kids, um, focusing on families and, um, reducing any barriers helping find housing for these families.
Great, any questions for Nikki?
Quick one, Nikki, can you refresh my memory, what, how much the grant was, the dollars were?
Seventy-six.
So it's the total amount that you're showing on here?
Sure, the total amount of the grant is a hundred and thirty-eight, zero fifty-four. Um, and our grant with LSS is seventy-six, seven fifty. So part of that grant is for the program itself, and then also partnering for some flex funds to be able to help families first month rent, damage deposit, prevent eviction, evictions.
Yep, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Nikki?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you Nikki. Bob, anything else?
Nothing more.
Any questions for Bob? Thank you Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks Bob, thanks Nikki.
We'll adjourn the human services board meeting at nine fifty and turn it over to the chair.
Thank you Commissioner Hyden, we'll move on to Chris Bird, county engineer, engineers update. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, good morning Chair and Commissioners, so.
Good morning.
It's good to be back. In many ways, it feels like I, I never left, so, uh, my staff did an excellent job, uh, in the last six months and I think put the department in a really good position for me to step back. So, I'm happy to be back here and, and in front of you all and providing an update. So, uh, we're all looking forward to warmer weather, uh, a lot of work that needs to be done out there this summer in Benton County. So, currently maintenance is busy with, uh, brushing and crack filling, uh, various roads. Last week, they spent some time, uh, sweeping off intersections, sweeping off all that sand that we put down with this winter that we had, second snowiest winter on record in our area. So, uh, we put all that material down to provide traction. In the springtime, we gotta get it off the roads because when the roads are dry, it reduces traction. So, uh, that was some work that they did, uh, last week. They'll continue that work. One of the things that we do every spring as maintenance is we have to wash bridge decks. Uh, a lot of our bridge decks have expansion joints built into them. And that sand gets down inside those expansion joints, and in the summer, as it expands and, uh, contracts, that can damage those joints. So that's something that we have to do every spring, is go in and wash all that sand material out of those expansion joints and make sure that the, the bridge deck drains are, are draining clean and freely. So that's something that we still need to, to do on the maintenance side. Construction, uh, as you know, uh, last board meeting, you awarded one of the largest construction projects because we tied several construction projects together under one contract. So, we're going to have the pre-construction meeting this Thursday with the contractor on, on that. But it looks like tentatively, they're gonna be starting around May twenty-second, so that's, uh, two, three weeks away. But to get started on that.
Can I interrupt, interrupt you real quick, Chris?
Yes.
Do you know where they're starting?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, I wrote that down, we had a meeting this morning to discuss that, so. Uh, I do know that, but I don't remember it off the top of my head, so.
That's fine, thank you.
But we'll know for sure, we'll, we'll confirm that at Thursday, and we'll, we'll release a, issue a press release to, to notify everybody and update our website. We have an interactive, uh, construction project map on our website, uh, that we'll put that on there, so. And we'll probably provide periodic updates as they move from one road to the next, just to keep the public informed as much as we can be on their progress. On the engineering side, we are still actively recruiting for an engineering technician. We actually had an interview last week, uh, with somebody, and that's what we've, sounds like what we've done and what we'll continue to do is we get applications in that meets minimum qualifications, we'll, we'll invite them in and, um, and interview them. So, we are getting, uh, it seems like we're getting good qualified candidates. We just, uh, can't nail them down to come work for us for, for various reasons. So, I think that's one of the things I wanna do as a department head, start looking at some of those reasons why people are, are seeing our job posting, interested, coming in and interviewing, but then we can't, you know, secure an agreement to get them to come work for us, uh, permanently. So, uh, we'll, uh, listening to Monty and some of the things that, uh, looking at retention, maybe we'll find some things through there. And I've got some ideas, uh, of what, uh, other counties and what other county or companies, private companies do to attract the same position. So, what I can't say is that this is a high-demand position throughout the state. Several colleges, uh, offer degree programs that are perfect for this position. One of which, we learned, uh, the, the instructor retired and they actually had to cancel classes this past semester. So, of a program that puts about twenty-five to forty students a year through that, couldn't do that this year because there's no instructor. And I know in Saint Cloud Technical College, they have a hundred percent placement rate. Their students, once they graduate, they have multiple job offers at the end of their, their instruction time. And, um, just as a show, we could, we could, uh, use more individuals going into that line of work for the work that needs to be done in Minnesota. But on a positive note, uh, we have hired two summer interns. We like doing that because in the summertime, obviously on the engineering side, work ramps up. There's a lot of, uh, work that needs to be done with measuring quantities to performing calculations and stuff. So it's nice to have those, uh, interns with us for the summer. The downside is, they go back to their colleges and, and schools in the fall. And a lot of times, construction is still dragging into September and, in the first part of October. But we do value their time, uh, while they're here. One thing I do wanna talk about, as you know, is, uh, advocacy for funding for road construction projects. You know, it's something that I worked with the board over the last several months, and I hope that we can continue that work, uh, going forward. I think that's important that we do continue, uh, that work. It's, it's about recognition. Sometimes a squeaky wheel gets the grease, and I hope that we can be kinda squeaky down in Saint Paul and even in DC. Uh, as the legislative session in Minnesota progresses, it sounds like they've gone to a conference committee on the bonding bill. What's unfortunate for Benton County is that bonding bill is mostly projects that are carried over from last year when they did not get an agreement from last year's project. So, we do have two bills that were authored and introduced, uh, this year for funding for Mayhew Lake Road. It doesn't look like that'll be incorporated, anything that goes to conference committee this legislative session, but I think that's a good step. We have a bill that's introduced, that would be the starting point for next year is for the legislators to look at those things that have already been introduced. So, I don't wanna say that any of our work was wasted this year, I think it was important to get out there. And as you talk to our counterparts in other counties, you talk to other county commissioners, and I talk to other county engineers, mu- many of them, if not all, will say, it's very rare that you get funding on the first try. It takes multiple attempts, uh, multiple conversations with your, your representatives, uh, to get funding. So that's what I hope to continue doing for you and all of Benton County. Be that voice and say, hey, remember us, you know, we had this bill that you liked and thought was a good funding, a good project to fund, let's see what we can do to, to get funding for that. At the federal level though, we submitted for what they call community project funding, uh, to our senator and our representative, Tom Emmer. And it sounds like they, they like our project, uh, the Cassa twenty-nine project. And they did like the Mayhew Lake project, it just wasn't far enough along in the engineering process that they felt comfortable, uh, pursuing federal funds for it. But the Cassa twenty-nine project, uh, did view the, they did view that favorably, so it sounds like that's being moved along. I don't think we'll know for sure whether we got funding or not until later this year. As if you listen to the news too, there's a lot of discussion with federal budgets and spending. So, there's a lot of unknowns, and that's why I don't think we'll see anything, certainly before June first when there's a deadline, I think looming at the federal level. But I think even in the normal process, if that wasn't, the federal debt ceiling wasn't a topic of discussion, I don't think agencies that submit that would know until towards the end of the year anyways. So, uh, just cause we haven't heard anything yet, I don't think that's bad news by, by any means. But, uh, we'll continue pursuing that and, and asking for updates as the year progresses, so. That's just a quick overview of the highway department, uh, as I see it in the last week, so. I'll leave it as we got a lot of work to do, uh, contracts that we've already awarded. And I know in the next five years, there's a lot of work and discussions that need to be had to discuss that, so. That is something, maybe I'll just, before I go and step down and answer any questions, is that, I think we should consider, already start talking about our five-year plan update. And that may be something we schedule a cow at the end of this meeting today and, um, go from there, but.
I'm glad you brought that up, it's on my list to do.
Yeah, I think we should get started sooner than later, no, no need to put it off, so.
Great, any questions?
Mr. Chair. Chris, do you have an idea of when we'll get notified, uh, about our raised grant that we applied for?
Oh, yeah, that was supposed to be happening, I think, early summer, so maybe in June. So, uh, it doesn't surprise me that we haven't heard anything yet, and I would not expect anything in May. So I think in another month, hopefully we start hearing some awards there, so.
Okay, one, Mr. Chair, one other question. So Chris, I've, I've actually been receiving, I don't, wow, I've been receiving a lot of phone calls about our Cassa one with the, uh, detour signs going up from twenty-three to Cassa three roundabout, Mayhew Lake.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a lot of the residents are asking, can they put four-way stop signs on those intersections? They were throwing everything out at me, but one thing that they threw out at me is, can we reduce that speed between twenty-three and Lake Station Roundabout on Cassa one because of that curve?
I think that's something that I could certainly have a conversation with, uh, the state on. It is a Cassa route, so normally speed limits, uh, have to be analyzed by the state traffic engineer. Yeah, there is a detour agreement, as you, you're aware, to, to use that as a detour for the state, uh, highway project. In many ways, that agreement kinda gives them some, some say in that as well. So I'll certainly bring that up with their, uh, project engineer, and say that's something that we need to, to consider. So the short answer is, no, we can't do anything just by slapping up some signs, um, up there. But I'll, I'll, I'll have those conversations to have that, that looked at. So, same thing with the, the four-way stops, so, um, it sounds good in theory, but I could, there could be attention, uh, potential additional issues that arise with four-way stops with congestion and, and backing things up as well.
And that's what I did mention to them, I told them we'd probably have a better chance of lowering the speed limit than anything else.
So Chris, just for clarification, because it is a Cassa road, they're gonna have some say in there, but if it was a, if it was a county road, that would stop at your desk?
Well, the speed limit, uh, the stop signs, we could certainly do some engineering work and analyze for stop signs. Speed limit still, um, per current state law, uh, is that, yeah, all county highways would need to go through that state traffic.
County or Cassa would have to go through, thank you.
Mr. Chair, but, but being it's a detour road system, we do have, they do have, they, they do have authority to lower that at that point in time though?
Uh, yeah, similar things have happened when twenty-three up here was under construction, and they used our, which is our county four, it comes through town. In that process, we asked them to look at that, and they made a four-way stop here at Dewey as part of that project. And there were some considerations, uh, for speed as well, so.
Thank you.
So, and that's, that's my opinion too, that any signage, additional things like that's required, that should be an expense to the project and not an expense to Benton County.
Right.
So Chris, when you were talking about, um, retention and trying to attract people, maybe you should talk to Amanda. We have a workforce committee now through BEP, and I know Knife River is part of that. And, you know, they're meeting with the VOTEC schools and colleges that produce people that you would want.
Sure.
And not just for, you know, your type. But I think if you get there and you're part of that, um, maybe you got a better chance of attracting people that are coming out of there. Well, you know, maybe they'll know a little bit more about us, and that's Knife River's perspective of why they wanna be there is because, um, I think, uh, the superintendent from Sacramento Schools is on that.
Okay.
Maybe even the superintendent from Foley is on there right now. But it'd be, you know, they're only gonna meet three, four times a year.
Okay.
But Amanda's in charge of that from BEP.
Sure, I, I like that idea. What I find is sometimes that high school students aren't even aware of this being a potential career path. So I think it's a good suggestion, we just need to get out there and make them aware that this is an option.
Yeah, cause it's, and it's a good option, and once, once they graduate, I mean, the money's good.
Yeah, uh, not to get too political, but there's a lot of talk about college debt. This is a career path that you could come out of college making a very good living wage with no college debt, so.
And I think that's what the, the rep from Knife River was trying to talk about. You know, I know one of the things that come forth was that, you know, in a lot of, a lot of our trades, he goes that you're even off in the winter, you can go ice fishing if you want.
That's right, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Chris, comments? Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
All right, commission meeting updates, anybody like to start, or would you like me to pick on you? I'll go, I'll start it off, how about that?
I'm sorry, I was looking through my calendar, go ahead.
I'll go, I'm ready. On April eighteenth, I was fortunate enough to attend the Malax County Ditch Authority meeting for judicial ditch one A, which I'm sure there's a few residents from Glendorado Township who may be surprised that they're included in a Malax County ditch. But there are three representatives, three commissioners from Malax County, one from Benton and one from Sherburne. Uh, so they're just getting started in that process, um, they're looking at their reas, uh, reas, uh, excuse me, redetermination benefits over there, so we're just gonna go in on that judicial ditch. And that did become a judicial ditch because, um, I believe in, back in twenty-nineteen, the DNR asked to vacate that area, which now, uh, started this process, so they're just gonna go in on it here four years later. On the twentieth, I was able to attend the Next Era Dinner at Coyote Moon. Again, just an update for landowners who are potentially looking, um, to be involved in that process. Was able to attend the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, uh, last Wednesday. I stayed through the portion of the Mississippi One Water One Plan update, and so, um, Jerry was able to present on that along with Emily. Of course, we were all at our BEP quarterly meeting last week, uh, again, that's Commissioner Poppy, just touched base on that on the workforce, they did a good job with their panel that presented on that. Last Friday, I was able to attend the South Gap Ribbon Open, uh, Cutting Ceremony down on Highway twenty-three in Hawick. Uh, that is a, uh, area that's been sponsored or put together by, with the Highway twenty-three Coalition. And so that was exciting to be able to get that project kicked off and going, so there was good attendance down there for that. And of course, we had our cow yesterday with Human Services, which was a good robust meeting that went on for three hours, so we learned some things yesterday. Commissioner Hyden?
Very interesting, informal meeting yesterday at the cow. So, I had, uh, only a couple of meetings, I had a special meeting with Career Solutions going through our audit system. Next, uh, BEP at the clearing, of course. And then, uh, I did do a, a Shack Regional Conversation Meeting. But I will inform you that as of now, we had a tentative signed agreement for our, uh, historical, Benton County Historical Building. So.
Oh, I mean, for, for the.
Sell the old building, correct, so hopefully that'll go through here shortly. So we take another parcel off of our property taxes, right? Or add to our property taxes, there we go.
Is it going?
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Commissioner Pop?
So, only thing I really had is we had BEP board meeting, we got updates, a lot of projects coming forward by, you know, that have went from initial contact to, you know, the end deal to actually, uh, pipeline projects that are working forward. So, still, you know, Amanda's gotta keep a lot of that confidential because that's why they come to see us.
If I could interrupt you quick, cause maybe just think of it, uh, If I could interrupt you quick, cause maybe just think of it, um, very important if commissioners can attend business retention meetings. I think that's a good show for, to be able to come out and support those businesses, especially if they're in your district.
Yeah.
Own just the county, but especially if they're in your district, to be able to, to attend those as possible.
Think they'd have any problem with that as long, you know, cause we're supporting.
We generally get the invitation for it. I'm just highlighting that. Thank you.
I think that's gonna work out quite well with, you know, like Chris said, getting high school seniors into some of these trades instead of, well, maybe I should do this, you know? So I know they're pretty excited about where it's gonna go. Um, and the only other thing that I had in that besides the BEP was we had our AMC, uh, State Board Meeting on the twenty-first. Um, we did, they did get a reduction from the hotel, but I didn't hear anything about counties getting any reduction. Um, the Intercontinental Bill that, the Association of Counties, eighty-eight thousand dollars. They hired Scott Anderson to look at, yeah, at, look at reducing it. And he presented, they reduced it to twenty-six thousand from eighty-eight thousand. And he said, the good news was, he said, I could probably go after more. And the AMC board agreed not to go after more because we have a longstanding, um, uh, you know, relationship with them. And it's the only place in St. Paul that is large enough to handle us. So they agreed to pay the twenty-six thousand and move on. So that was one of the things. And then the other part, we don't have any take in it. A lot of, a lot of discussion was talked about that. Um, the federal government's payment to, um, uh, what do they call it? Pelt land? But we don't get a payment. We're one of the seven counties that get no payment. So in Minnesota, and they, the, the, the federal is asking for a one percent donation. The smallest amount you could get was a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think twelve million was the highest in Benton County. Cass County got two million. And that, that's gonna go into a fund that's gonna disperse money just from the interest to counties to help make up the, the lost money and revenue from Pelt. But we won't get a letter because we have no money to give.
So they're gonna look at county statewide to help?
Yep, they want, there's, well, there's seven counties, so there'd be eighty counties. And I see it was on the Morrison County agenda and they're, they tabled it because they got a hundred thousand bucks. But we don't, we don't get any because we have no federal, federal land.
Right.
So, which is good or bad. I don't know which one it is.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that'll be it.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Um, I had the tri-cap meeting and, um, they discussed the Stamp Out Hunger, which is gonna be, um, May thirteenth. So if anybody puts stuff out by their mailboxes that goes to food shelves and stuff. Um, they're, um, gonna be getting some buses now that are finally coming through. Then I went to, um, uh, volunteer social that had a bunch of, um, five oh one C threes for the city or, um, they have volunteers and they had, uh, they had little projects for everybody to do to go around and meet them. That was pretty interesting. I, I was invited through RSVP. And, um, the other things that everybody else did.
All right. All right. Move on to Commissioner comments. Any comments? Additional comments? All right, thank you. Set Committee of the Holes. Monte.
Okay. Um, the BEP would like to present the housing study on May twenty-fourth, starting at eleven-thirty. For now, we don't have a specific location, but let's for now say it's gonna be at the clearing. If that changes, we'll let you know. Uh, for now, let's assume the clearing in Sock Rapids, again, May twenty-fourth, eleven-thirty, housing study. And we just need to commit to the record, the BEP quarter meeting, which was last week. I believe that was on Thursday morning. At seven-thirty. That went into the record.
Seven-thirty.
And I think I heard you want to schedule Committee of the Hole with Highway.
I do and.
Chris, can you have?
Chris, if I could start with, maybe I'll just rattle off a few things that were on my mind and hopefully they're on your list too. But, um, obviously the five-year road plan, get going on that discussion again. Um, really like to sit down and talk about our ongoing county ditch maintenance, what our, what our, um, process is gonna be. I think we've kind of talked about it, but really haven't made decisions to move forward on it. So I'd really like to get back into that.
Good idea.
Um, also have some discussion on County Three and Five in Gilman.
Okay.
And, um, then what our continuing role will be with Houston going forward now that we have an engineer back in the seat. So just to have that, those discussions. I think Monte and it's up to you, but I think this will be like a one-item cow with highway.
Agreed. No, we don't want to load up with anything more, right? Yeah, just highway issues. Yeah.
I don't know if you had other suggestions for that one, but those are just some things that pop in my mind.
Evidently, we should, we should talk about County twenty-five after the whole.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
This morning, you know? I think I see some of the same issues on County twenty-five that I seen when we were talking about seventy-eight, large equipment, narrow road. Uh, you know, we didn't have the pedestrian problem up there that they seem to have, so.
No, and one comment that came up, and maybe you've already done this, but I don't know how long ago, is we do have the capability with our, uh, a traffic count to be able to tell truck or large commercial vehicles versus automobiles, right?
That's right, yeah.
So depending on when that was last done, maybe that's something we could do and get that information brought forth to the cow.
Okay.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Right now, those mailboxes are right up to the road.
Yeah, it's a narrow road.
So let's start looking at dates then, um, if we may.
Any other highlights about that engineer update, Chris, that we didn't talk about that you were thinking to include or?
I think too, you probably want to talk about, do you want to schedule a spring road tour? Uh, if so, when? You could talk about that at the cow. Do you want one, need one?
Okay.
When that would happen? So.
All right.
Yep.
So you have some dates you're thinking, Monte, or?
Uh, I, uh, I didn't necessarily, Chris.
Chris, how long would it take to get that ADT on that?
We usually have to keep them out there for a week. So, I mean, if we put them out there this afternoon, it would be next Tuesday before we go pick it up. So.
So how about, uh, can we do Monday the fifteenth?
That looks good. Yeah.
No, I'd prefer if we'd skip May completely.
Sure. Hopefully you're gonna be in the field, right?
Yeah, we're already two weeks.
I apologize. My meetings aren't until the afternoon on the fifteenth.
Okay. Thoughts, Commissioner Pop?
Well, we can, if we start, you know, eight-thirty in the morning.
Eight-thirty, eight.
You okay with the fifteenth then?
Yeah, we can do the fifteenth.
That work for you, Chris?
Yep, that's open for me. So eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty on May fifteenth.
Okay.
Committee of the Hole. Just highway.
Yep, okay.
Only highway items. Yes, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. And maybe we can touch a little bit, Chris, on our sales tax balance and, and.
Yeah, that's definitely certainly part of the five-year, cause that's a big source of revenue for the five-year construction program. So.
So yeah, a lot of items on that.
Lot of items to discuss on that highway part.
Um, the other one I'd like to add to our cow next week with GLT is I think we need to have some formal and final discussions on our east side discussions we had yesterday at Human Services.
Okay.
So there's some ragged edges on that.
Yep.
And I think us as a board need to clarify that and get it cleaned up.
Got it. Okay, yeah.
Get it cleaned up or maybe they, they, it sounded like they were gonna dig into the stats a little bit more too, which they wouldn't have by now.
This is information GLT needs to have as they're presenting. So. Let's try to wrap that up if we can.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Anything else, Monte?
No, that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
First, move to set the cows, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion second to set the cows is presented. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. It's carried.